Hello, my name is Megan Sathery. I'm with the Lewis County Planning Division and I want to welcome you to the Planning Commission Public Meeting today. This meeting is taking place in person, streaming live via Zoom, and it is being recorded. For those joining us via Zoom, please remember to mute your phone or device when you are not speaking. If you forget to mute your phone or device, we will mute you. The Zoom chat feature is modified so participants may report technical difficulties directly to myself, the clerk. No public comment or questions will be taken through the chat feature. Tonight is a public hearing on the rural housing alternative. We will start with the roll call. The following planning commissioners are present in the room. Commissioner Spogen, Alves, Corbin, Rich, and Scootley. The following planning commissioners are present on Zoom. Commissioner Foster and Commissioner Russell is excused. With six planning commissioners present, we do have a quorum. We're now ready to begin. Chair Corbin.
My name is Frank Corbin and I'd like to call to order the February 27th, 2024 meeting of the Lewis County Planning Commission. Prior to tonight, the commissioners received the agenda for today and the agenda is displayed on the screen. I would entertain a motion and a second from the Planning Commission to approve the agendas presented.
I will make that motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We've just been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
The motion passes with six yes votes.
Okay, thank you. Prior to tonight, the commission received the meeting notes from the February 13th, 2024 meeting. If there are no corrections, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the, from that meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve, approve the meeting minutes from February 13th, 2024. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
The motion passes with six yes votes.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is public comment. Uh, we are discussing tonight, um, rural housing alternative. This is not the time for that. If you have public comment on any other subject or item that you'd like to bring to the Planning Commission, you can feel free to do so at this time. Uh, Megan, do we have anyone signed up?
We don't have anyone signed up in the room to give public comment. Is there anybody on Zoom? Please go ahead and unmute yourself or raise your hand. Okay, I see none.
Okay, we have no public comment. Okay, so tonight's agenda item, as I have said, is the public hearing on the rural housing alternative. Uh, I'd like to recommend to the planning commissioners that we set an 8:00 PM, uh, end time for our, um, public testimony. If it needs to go over, we can certainly go over, but, um, currently as it stands, each commenter or excuse me, person giving public testimony will have three minutes. So it doesn't look like we're going to have a problem, uh, exceeding the eight o'clock timeline, but I did want to set that out there at the beginning of the meeting that, um, we hope to have everything done by then. Okay, so if everyone's in agreement with that. Okay. All right, so since this is a public hearing, I would like to ask everyone's cooperation. We'll start with a few simple questions, then a, then a brief staff presentation, followed by questions from the commissioners and finally take public testimony. Is there anyone in the audience who believes that the public was not notified in a timely manner? If so, please raise your hand or unmute yourself and say yes. Megan, are any hands raised or online or in the room?
There are no hands raised on Zoom. And then I will just say if, um, anybody has anything to say in the room, please step up to the podium.
Okay, do any of the planning commissioners have any disclosures that you would like to make? Or expressions of any conflicts of interest? Okay, seeing none. Okay. All right, I will now turn it over to staff. Mindy, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. Mindy Brooks also here tonight is Eric Eisenberg. So we'll be giving the staff presentation on the rural housing alternative. All materials associated with proposal are available on the community development webpage. The notice of hearing was published on February 13th in the Chronicle. An email notification regarding the hearing was sent to the Planning Commission email list on February 20th, and we have received no written testimony. Next slide. So as a reminder of the process steps we've taken up till now, we have held eight workshops on this topic. That's quite a few on this particular topic. Um, each of those was preceded by a staff report. Workshops are open to the public. We advertise them again through that email list that anyone can sign up for and on our webpage. Three of the workshops were results from the industry stakeholder, uh, work group, their evaluation. Um, this was a group of technical experts, real estate, septic designers, builders, et cetera. Again, all the reports are on the community development webpage for the public to review. Excuse me, next slide. Tonight, we're going to do a short presentation because you guys have already received a lot of information about this. This will be very high level, very summary. Um, we're going to start with the goals of the proposal, then a little bit of history, very small amount of history, why we're proposing the rural housing alternative, an explanation, um, of rural character, and then we will close with the RHA proposal itself. Next slide. The goals of the RHA are first, we want to provide flexibility. So property owners can choose to develop housing that is more affordable than the typical single-family residential. This is intended to foster opportunities for people to both live and work in rural areas. And we are required, as you know, to maintain rural character. So you're going to see a lot in the proposal that is intended to do that, to maintain the rural character. Next slide. A little bit of history, just a little bit. Next slide. The history is actually very long if we want to talk about affordable housing and housing issues in Lewis County, but the, um, specific history related to this project started in 2020 when the Board of County Commissioners passed a strategic plan. And one of the big five priorities was to increase housing availability and affordability in Lewis County. Then in 2021, the county, in partnership with other jurisdictions and entities, completed a housing study and we held a housing summit. Out of the strategy, study and summit, Lewis County developed a housing initiative and work plan. And action item H was to develop a multifamily housing proof of concept. Brief pause. When we say multifamily here, we mean three or more units. That's what Lewis County means by multifamily. So the result of action item H is the rural housing alternative. So that's the progression of how we got here. Next slide. Why rural housing alternative? So action item H, why did we include that in the housing initiative and work plan that the Board of County Commissioners approved? Uh, for a few reasons, there are quite a few reasons for it, but first and foremost, the price of housing is increasing in rural areas faster than it's increasing in urban areas. It's up everywhere, we know that. Um, in Centaria, the price went up 182% over the 10-year period. And over that same 10-year period, the price in the rural areas, we looked at Curtis and Packwood, went up over 300%. Today, approximately 69% of the people living outside of cities in Lewis County cannot afford a median-priced home. That's 30,000 people who cannot afford the housing in rural areas. Next slide. You may be wondering where we get that number, 30,000 people. Well, in 2022, according to the State's Office of Financial Management, which is the entity that does population projections for all jurisdictions in Washington, the population living outside of cities in rural, in, uh, Lewis County was 42,629 people. 51% of the population in Lewis County lives outside of cities and urban growth areas. And increasingly, those people cannot afford to live there. Next slide. Now you may ask why there are so many people living outside of the cities in rural areas. One of the reasons is because Lewis County is 70% resource land. The dark green is forest land, the light green is agriculture. These are working lands. People have jobs in these areas and we want them to be able to live within a reasonable distance of their job. The dark brown, that's our parks and, uh, national, uh, forest areas, wilderness areas. Again, people work here. They work at Mount Rainier National Park, White Pass. Forestry, agriculture, tourism, that is the county's economy. We need people to work and live in the rural areas and to do so, they need housing they can afford. Next slide. So let's talk a little bit about rural character because that is a really important component of the Growth Management Act. Outside of Lammert's, which we addressed separately through sub-area planning work, Lewis County has 510 and 20 acre lots. That's pretty much what we have, right? Um, and then ag and forestry, that's pretty much what our, our property looks like. Typically, each of those 510, 20 acre lots gets developed with a cluster of structures. You get a house, a barn, a shop, a garage, pump houses, et cetera, right? And they're all clustered together. Um, there's no urban services, these structures, these people, they are served by onsite well and septic by and large. Um, and this is repeated everywhere across the county. This is Lewis County's rural character. Large lots, clusters of many structures in each lots, onsite well and septic. Next slide. Here's a comparison between rural density of development and urban density of development. So we just saw rural character, cluster of lots of structures clustered up. It's on five acres or larger, lots of green space, very little infrastructure. Urban character at a single-family density, which is still the lowest density in an urban area, are typically quarter acre lots. And the structures cover most of the lot. There's not much green space and there's much more infrastructure, roads, rights away, et cetera. So noting these examples that we are looking at the lowest density of urban, right? Urban density can be much more dense than this. But for comparison's sake, we're looking at rural character and then the lowest density of urban, of urban character. Next slide, please. We know it's not just about these structures and how many structures are located, um, in the rural versus urban area. It's also about the density of people living in those spaces. So again, if we're looking at quarter acre lots over a 25 acre urban area and we assume two dwellings per lot and 2.5 people living per dwelling, that's 500 people in a 25 acre area of land in the urban area. That would be a minimum density for urban. In the rural setting, even with RHA, even with the rural housing alternative, which we'll get into in a second, the maximum buildout only results in 50 people over those 25 acres. So not only is the density of structures 10 times greater in an urban area, the density of people even with RHA is still 10 times greater in an urban area. Next slide. So let's look at the proposal. Today, in our RDD 510 and 20 acre zones, Lewis County allows one single-family and one ADU. That's our current allowance. The proposal under RHA is to allow up to four dwelling units, attached or detached. The example we have here is a duplex and attached ADU. So this is currently not allowed. You can't do a duplex and attached ADU right now. Today, we would just allow one single-family and one ADU. Um, why? Let's go back to the why. Because the goal is to provide flexibility for the diversity of housing that is more affordable. RHA allows more smaller housing units, which will cost less per dwelling, than only allowing one to two larger housing units. RHA will produce more affordable, still market rate, let's be very clear. This is still market rate housing. We're not dropping below market rate, right? But it will provide smaller units, which therefore can be more affordable than larger units, um, that are allowed today. And it creates flexibility for the property owner. It allows more choices for people so they can fit their needs on their property. Next slide. Let's talk about all the constraints, all the ways we are making sure we maintain rural character, and there are a lot of them. The lot must be five acres in size or larger. The dwelling units must be clustered on 1.25 acres of the lot. So remember, that's our rural character, right? Cluster up the units on the larger lots. The total square footage of all the dwelling units added together is capped at 3,600 square feet. Why? Because the average single-family home in Lewis County is 2,300 square feet. And we allow one of those plus an ADU, which can be no larger than 1,296 square feet. So our existing rural character from that square footage of dwelling standpoint is 3,600 square feet. So that's what we're proposing to keep. Um, so the total square footage, again, 3,600. So what that means, you could get up to four of these. So four 900, if you're building from scratch, you could do four 900 square foot homes on a lot that's five acres or larger. If the rest is met. So the rest of things that must be met here, housing must be served by rural services. That usually means onsite well and septic, no urban services, no municipal sewer water. The housing units have to be accessed by one primary driveway, so they don't get separate entrances. We've added a new constraint that was in your report, the housing units. If they are detached, then there must be a 10-foot separation between them. This is to create fire separation between structures. The lot cannot be subdivided based on those RHA, right? So you can't take a five acre lot, put four houses on him and turn it into four lots. That's still one lot. We capped the number of RHA developments per fire district, uh, per year, excuse me, because, um, rural fire districts don't have the capacity to handle significant development and we want it dispersed, right? We don't want to impact the transportation system either. So this disperses it across the county. And then, of course, all the typical requirements that apply to development still apply. Critical areas, building codes, um, roads, all those things that always apply, always apply to these as well. So those are our other safeguards. Next slide. Again, all these constraints are designed to ensure that while allowing flexibility and allowing more but smaller dwellings that can be more affordable, we are still maintaining the rural character. The constraints ensure that the rural housing alternative at full buildout, which is shown on the right, is still within county's rural character and is not urban character. Next slide. This is the last one, few things to remember. No one in Washington has done this before. This is very innovative and innovative is difficult, sometimes a little scary to dive into. Um, the Growth Management Act actually encourages innovation. So it does encourage us to do this, but this is the first time that something like this has been considered in the state. Staff have done a lot of homework. We've worked with industry experts. You, the Planning Commission, have been a big part of this. You've asked a lot of tough questions that we've gone back and done research on to bring more information forward. Um, and I want to say that this proposal, it is intentionally conservative. We've put a lot of constraints on this. What we'll do is we'll monitor it. If this is approved, we're going to monitor it for a few years and see how it goes. And we can make adjustments to the rules as needed as we move forward. But we have started out very conservative intentionally. And with that, I will now take questions from the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mindy. Uh, any planning commissioners in the room tonight would like to ask questions of Mindy? Go ahead, Lori.
Um, Mindy, on the slide that was, uh, had the heading of rural character, you had the two different examples, the urban and the rural. And I wondered, in that rural example, were the little boxes, is that 1.25 acres?
The, the little boxes are structures.
No, the.
The outlines?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, they are.
Okay, and, and how did, refresh my memory, how did we come up or how did you come up with the 1.25 acres rather than two or?
So it was based on basically like an aerial photography survey of, of parcels of the county that, if you, um, would you mind scrolling back up to the slide that has the pictures of the aerial photographs? The other direction, please, yeah. Keep going, keep going. This one. So there were many more examples than just these, but basically I found, I don't know, maybe 20 parcels that had this sort of quintessential Lewis County look. And then I used our GIS, uh, web map to draw a box around where the build structures were. And they all were between one and one and a half acres. And so we just picked right in the middle of that.
Okay, and then, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but you could put the, um, residences in the 1.25 acres, but the septics, the wells, the storage units, the barns, everything else can be outside that envelope.
Yes, I think the idea is that the code would say that the residential structures and structures immediately associated with them, like you're, if you're going to have an, you know, a garage or something like that, that's attached, that, that has to be within the envelope, but the underground, you know, the drain field, the, um, the, the other well infrastructure, other septic infrastructure, that stuff doesn't have to be in the, in the 1.25 acres.
Did you give any thought to kind of pushing it towards the higher end, like the 1.5 acres or something, to allow the people to spread out a little bit more than fire code?
Well, I mean, I guess we did think about that, but it has, like most things having to do with the RHA was a balance of competing factors, right? So for the fire safety aspect of it, they wanted to give people the opportunity. Fire chiefs primarily like wanted more space between or the building code.
Right.
They want more space between. On the other hand, there are, the more spread out there it is, the less open space you're going to get. And open space is extremely important to rural character and GMA compliance because it allows for, um, stormwater handling and allows for wildlife passage. And so, I mean, it's, we could potentially consider an acre and a half as being sort of like the top end of what we were seeing in front of your run of the mill Lewis County parcel. Um, but most of the RHA has tried to be structured towards an average as opposed to being the maximum of what we can accept. So for example, 3,600 square feet is keyed into the average size of a rural house that we would allow as opposed to the maximum size, which is like way, way bigger.
Yeah, I totally understand that.
So in that sense, it was in line with the philosophy of the proposal to have it be the middle instead of being the top.
I just, when I, when I look at, I was thinking about this prior, I forgot to ask Mindy about it, but when I look at it, I always try to factor in, you know, uh, the cars because each house is probably going to have two cars, one or two extra cars, you know? So it, it, it seems like it could get a little bit congested if you, if you could get it on a little bit bigger.
Yeah, and I would say again, we should start conservative and see how it goes. And we can loosen things up.
Because you think that might be a bone of contention if some.
Everything that we do in here that makes a larger footprint of development is going to, is going to hurt us from a rural character standpoint. So we should be appropriate, which Eric is explaining why we think this is appropriate, but conservative. Yeah.
I do think stormwater in particular is something that's like a particular concern. So in some of those early, um, growth management challenges, um, to counties that were looking at subdividing to smaller than five acre parcels, um, one of the positions articulated by Futurewise was that the lot coverage would get above a certain threshold where they thought it would be environmentally harmful because of impervious services shedding onto the ground. And they didn't have designed stormwater systems the way that they would have in an urban area because it's much denser. And so again, like that is, that, that's one of the things that the Growth Management Act is trying to protect against. It is, it is a very environmentally protective system. And so out of respect for that, we wanted to try and make sure that we could, you know, in good faith, maintain that this is still a very small lot coverage of impervious services.
Are, are garages part of the 900 square feet?
Not, not if they're not conditioned, so only.
No, hold on a second, sorry. Let me just explain. The nine, the four 900 is dwelling space. Garages are not dwelling space. They are not counted towards that.
They were, I, I think it's important to note that we defined it as conditioned.
Technically, it's, it's 900 plus 400.
It's, yeah, it would, if the garage were conditioned space, however, then I believe that, that we rule would be different, but it.
Well, yeah, but I, but we assume that the garage is not part of the dwelling. So this is your dwelling space. If your garage is also substituting something else, but yeah, no, it's, it's 3,600 square feet of dwelling space.
Right, plus four times.
Plus, plus if you want garage, barn, whatever.
Right.
Yeah, those are other, those are other structures. Yep.
Okay, Gretchen?
Um, I'm not sure if that constraints slide was exhaustive of everything that you've told us, but for anybody that's seeing this for the first time, I didn't see the short-term rental restriction on your slide.
No, thank you. We did not have that listed in there, but there is a prohibition that these be used as short-term rentals. So an RHA development cannot be used as transient accommodations.
Jason? It is still in the code draft, even if it's not on the slide, so it's not gone, don't worry.
Hey, Jason?
So, um, I know last time we met about this, uh, one of the things that came up was that this would be likely to be challenged if we, when we take this to the state. So what is, how likely, if you were to venture a guess, I mean, are we talking 100%?
To get challenged?
Yeah.
Or to win?
Uh, well, that will, that will be my other question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's.
If we have just some kind of an idea.
It's very likely that we'll get challenged because this hasn't been done before. Um, and so I think it's very high likelihood that we get challenged. Um, we would not bring something to you that we didn't think we could defend. So we feel that we have constrained it to meet rural character and that we're meeting the other intents of the Growth Management Act, to be innovative, to make sure people can live and work in the rural areas. Um, so while we know that we are likely going to get appealed, we feel confident that we will put up a good argument that fits underneath of GMA.
Okay.
Hey, Corbin, do you have anything?
Wait, hold on. I, we, I've got some.
Oh.
More stuff, but I, and I'd like to hear her answer first.
Barb Russell from the prosecutor's office. I would like to add that the time constraints on appeals are really tight. So, um, it depends a lot on publicity and how far news gets within the timeframes for appeal. Once those times have passed, then the appeals are barred.
Um, so my other question is, so it's going to get appealed very likely. Um, we have a, I don't know, 50/50-ish, right? I mean, am I sort of in that neighborhood?
I don't want to hazard a guess. I mean, the process of this is the next step, we have to submit this to Commerce and Commerce will do a notification to people, so they will be aware of it. Then we do a SEPA. There will be a notification. People will be aware of this by the time it gets to the Board of County Commissioners. So I think the likelihood is high that we would get appealed.
Okay.
I, I will add from the, the council's perspective that I will be comfortable going in and defending this with a straight face. I, I think it's well-founded and the groundwork that Eric and Mindy have laid showing that they've done homework and they, that this is reasonable within the constraints of a rural character, rural area, that, um, I don't have any hesitation about standing up and defending it.
Okay, um, I have a couple other quick questions. What in, in terms of, um, capital and in, uh, staff time, are we looking at to fight this thing? Um, and to, let's say we go the distance, I mean, what is, what does that look like?
I don't want to guess how much staff time I take. The staff here prepare all of the findings of fact, which is all the components underneath of law. So it should all be there in terms of just organizing it and preparing the arguments. I don't, I don't know how much time it would take.
Um, from, from my perspective, there's too many variables in that to predict it. It depends on the type of appeal and the level of appeal and all kinds of things.
And the result, right? So that, because the, depending on what rulings you get, that dictates whether people are appealing that up the change, other people, and so, yeah.
Yeah, so it is, it is very variable, but we have laid the groundwork so that the time down the road is less.
Okay, so you're, you're saying that once this gets challenged, most likely there's not a lot more time required of the county staff to.
It's mostly organizing information because we will have established the record itself and the record is very thorough. Yep. Other questions from you, Jason?
And I, I would only add that most of the time is mine because, uh, the work that the staff does is mostly done before we get to that point. Uh, but like I said, I'm, I'm comfortable with the work that staff's done and I think they've laid good groundwork for the reasoning for proposing this and for the constraints that they place on it, that I think it makes sense. And I'm, I would not be embarrassed standing up and defending it.
Hey, Corbin, do you have anything? Commissioner Foster?
A lot of my, yeah, thank you. Thank you for clarifying. I will not miss that. Um, so nothing, nothing, no concerns to address that haven't already been addressed. I, I want to iterate, I really appreciate the level of detail, the willingness that staff have been able to take our feedback, what questions we've had over the last few months, go back, come back to us, back and forth, back and forth. It's been very helpful. Um, I'm very happy with this version, um, that we have before us today. I think it does a really good job of balancing housing needs, additional housing needs, um, trying to promote, um, the market to go towards getting those prices under some measure of control without sacrificing owner flexibility. So I'm very happy with this draft, with this version that we have, uh, today. And I'm really happy to get to the voting part for this, to see, uh, see it play out from here on. So no, thank you for the opportunity, Chair.
Absolutely. Okay, Lori?
Uh, Mindy, I asked this question, uh, earlier and you responded back about, uh, if you wanted to use one of the local water systems. And I noticed in this presentation, you said it, it cannot use municipal. And I wasn't sure what municipal means.
Yeah, so it's generally. Yeah. So it's generally, these are going to be generally served by onsite well and septic. These are five, ten, twenty acre lots. So in those places, you typically do not have any type of municipal system that is available. So no water district systems.
So you couldn't use boys, like a Boys' Water?
Yes.
Yes, you could, or?
Yes, you could.
Oh, you can't. Okay.
So what I said was typically these are going to be onsite well and septic. If you are within a drainage district and they have availability, and you could hook up to them, or if you need to buy a share of water, those, those options are available. There just isn't much water districts serving five, ten and twenty acres. Those are largely serving lammers, which are much smaller and zoned differently. But it is, it is a possibility.
Okay. I just wasn't sure about that one word.
Yeah, it's just not typical, but it is possible.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, I have a question. Mindy, could you please go over any safeguards that you feel are in place that could help with uh, derelict vehicles, trash, you know, unsightly properties? I've had a couple of members of the community reach out to me about their concerns that you start adding a bunch of little homes, you know, packed together and that, you know, the natural tendency of people is to collect things and, you know, uh, one man's treasure is another man's, or should, should I say that one man's junk is another man's treasure, whatever? And so I want to make sure that, you know, that if there are any safeguards that could be had, that maybe we can make sure that those are addressed. Uh, because that would, I think, reduce the likelihood of somebody complaining and perhaps maybe even challenging, you know, this, this proposal.
So, yeah, so keep in mind that there are already rules available for people to exercise, right? We don't allow people to have unpermitted junk yards. And we also are not driving around looking for those. So if you need to report your neighbor, please do report your neighbor and we'll take that into code enforcement. So we already have the codes in place for that. The other thing I'd like to say is, um, when we put before you in the past, how many we anticipate of these, we anticipate maybe twenty structures a year under this scenario, given, um, the way the ADU uh, has worked out after we liberalized that code. And the order of magnitude of single family residential is around two hundred per year. So in terms of how many structures are going in where you have an opportunity for additional, you know, unpermitted junk yards, single family has a higher likelihood and that is already permitted. So these do not represent any more likelihood than the two hundred single family homes that we have going in every year. Please do.
Okay, thank you. Eric?
I also wanted to point out that we did include a slightly increased setbacks as compared with regular single family homes to have a little bit more of a visual buffer from neighbors. And, uh, I also, I wanted to remind you and the people here that there was a lot of financial work that the industry group did. And they tended to show that these developments are much more expensive than a single family home typically. So the, each individual unit might cost less. That's where you get the price attainability, right? But the whole development, uh, costs much more, maybe twice as much as a single family home. So there's no necessarily, there's no reason that these RHA developments would have to be for a lower income segment. They, um, they could be developed and sold to people who are probably still middle income because you're still talking about a home that costs, you know, like maybe two hundred fifty, three hundred, or even three hundred fifty thousand dollars. It's just smaller. And if you were to develop one of these because you want to do it for your own family, as a family uh, unit for housing for your, your extended family, again, the capital that you would need to install it would be very high. And so there is some reason to think that actually these would be, you know, like no different than expensive single family residences that go in because the amount of capital required is comparable in some circumstances.
Thank you. I wanted you to, to speak to the issue because you can do it so much more elegantly than I can.
Yeah.
Uh, but you know, it, it was a genuine concern, you know, that a couple of people have had. And, you know, I, I, I respect people that would reach out, you know, and express their concerns on something. And I will do everything I can to make sure that they're addressed.
I, I would, outside of this rural housing alternative, I will just add that when I'm in the community, talking to people about their priorities, um, this is a major concern for our county and the people in our county. We have a lot of unpermitted junkyards out there. So it is on people's mind. And, and at this point, my recommendation to everyone is call code enforcement. Yeah.
Okay, everybody's had a round to make, uh, questions. I wanted to make another round. So, um, if your mic is on, I will see it and I'll call on you and we'll go ahead. And anybody else who has a question will give everybody another turn. Gretchen?
Oh, this is something I've never thought of before until just now, when you said it was going to be such an investment to build it out to its fullest potential. Would there, when you go to apply for the RHA as a landowner and you submit your plans that you will have four, you know, four dwellings, whatever your plan is, do you have to do that all at once? I mean, or do you have time to slowly add another, add another, add another?
You definitely do not have to do it all at once. And that is one thing that is a sort of interesting feature of the RHA is that right now, when someone develops on their rural lot, they usually develop to a finished state all at one time, right? They usually would build their house and that's it. They might then be able to add an ADU. Some people build a house and an ADU now together, but they kind of build it and then they're done. They have no opportunity to get larger incrementally. If you were planning ahead, you could do an RHA incrementally. You could build a small unit with a big septic system, expecting that then you would add more units later. You would need to be very careful about making sure you were ready to do it though, because the septic system, if you build a, a single family home, septic system for your small home, it won't have capacity and adding that capacity will be very expensive later. Same thing is true for the well. If you were to site the well right next to your house, because you would be allowed to do that for a single family residence. When you add those extra units and becomes a group B well, suddenly you'll need a hundred foot sanitary control area. So there is no reason that it couldn't be done incrementally, but someone would need to be smart about making sure that they designed it in upfront in advance to make sure that it was possible.
Because you're going to have, if, if you were to do four units, I would assume that most people would do two wells because they wouldn't want to do one well and have to be required to do the class B water system.
Because it would be a single application? Well, actually, I don't remember. I would have to look into that again, but I thought that they would need a group B anyway, that you wouldn't be able to do two shared wells.
Uh, yeah.
Single up.
Oh, I think because this is going to be a single development, even if it is done over time on one particular site, you're probably at four going to end up in a group B situation.
Oh, okay.
Most likely.
Okay.
I mean.
Certainly that's how we looked at from a water rights perspective. They would treat all the, the water draws being.
Okay.
I thought that was true for group B reforms as well.
I would also add that, um, your sanitary control area is not to, that other wells are also considered potential points of contamination. So your sanitary control areas would make it pretty difficult to put two wells on a single five acre lot.
That was my question. If you have the sanitary control, the two wells and then a, a reserve, you're, you're going to be, you know, over in the neighbor's area. So.
Right. Although it is, again, it's worth pointing out that we talk about five acre lots because that's the smallest potential lot. But you could equally put an RHA on a twenty acre lot or a forty acre lot if that was what you wanted to do.
Right.
Um, so as long as it was in rural development district zoning.
Well, one thing that, um, I don't know if you know this, but one thing that Lewis County isn't monitoring probably adequately is if your neighbor ends up putting their well right on the line, you know, it, it, it impacts your, let's say your five acres. That, and that is happening in Lewis County where they can come and drill a well right, right on the, on your line. So you could end up with not enough area to do it on a five.
Not to say that everyone follows the rules, but if they go through their master site reviews and they're supposed to mark off where their sanitary control areas are, and if they're on somebody else's property, there's supposed to be a covenant for that. And it would have to be.
Yeah, if they're over on somebody else's property. But if they put their well on my line, it's got a hundred foot. See.
If they put it on their line and that hundred foot or fifty foot, if it's a single family or two party,
Right.
then, um, they're supposed to get that agreement from you for the sanitary control area. Now, that, that's assuming again that everybody's following the law and you've got overlap of different jurisdictions monitoring it. So that doesn't mean to say that everybody follows the rules or it always gets caught, but there's supposed to be some control mechanisms for that.
Right. It's supposed, supposed to is operative word.
Great questions. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just saying that some of that regulation is newer than a lot of the wells. So if you're, if the well drilling predates that, then those controls don't do much for you either.
Okay, I'm going to go around the room just one more time. I don't want to cut anybody off or shorten the time for anybody. Commissioner Foster, would you have anything that's come to your mind since the last you spoke?
Thank you for checking, but nothing more has come to my mind at this point.
Okay, thank you. Do you have anything, Mr. Sketley? Huh? Scoot, I'm sorry. I, I haven't heard the pronunciation of your name. So my apologies.
That, that's okay. I'll, I'll keep reminding you.
Thank you.
Well, I like the word conservation. You know, conservation of our environment, conservation of our farmland, conservation of our, uh, farm way of life. To me, obviously, I'm not in favor of this. Multi-family is not. It, it just isn't. And I, I think we've gone so fuzzy on our terms and our optimism that we're, we were just fooling ourselves. So that's, that's my two cents.
So not, not to, I'm sorry, I didn't want to interrupt you. You said it was your two cents. Just to remind you, this is a time for questions. The time for statements will be during deliberation.
Thank you. I was going to say that. Thank you. Okay, Lori, do you have any more questions? Okay, Gretchen? Jason? Okay, I'm good too. All right. All right. Well, we have asked our questions, so it is time to move now to oral testimony. And so, um, staff, would you like your opening remarks and presentation to be added to the testimony and to the record?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Before we begin public testimony, I'm sorry.
I think it's true for all three of us, is that?
Yes, indeed.
My apologies. I'm still getting the hang of this thing. All right. So as we begin public testimony, I wanted to remind everyone, uh, the public staff and commissioners, especially to please be civil and respectful. Uh, applauding or booing is not allowed. Testimony will begin with those who have notified staff in advance that they wish to testify, followed by those who have signed up at the, uh, to testify at the lectern who are in the room. And then finally, those who have their hands raised in Zoom. Each person will have three minutes to provide testimony. And once you begin speaking, Megan, to my right, we'll start the timer, which will be displayed on the screen. If you go over three minutes, a trap door will open up from under your seat and you will be removed from the print. No, I'm just kidding. Staff will interrupt you and remind you of the three minute time limit and you'll need to wrap up your comments. You may donate your time, uh, if you have a speaker that you would like to give your three minutes to, you can certainly do that when you're called. The maximum that a person can speak, however, will be six minutes. So you have your three minutes and then one person can donate their three minutes, up to three minutes to you. Uh, and that would allow you a full six minutes. Let's see. When your name is called and you wish to donate your time, you can please state so at that time. And then the person who's the recipient will receive those three minutes. When you provide testimony to the commission, you're required to state your full name and mailing address for the record. Speak slowly and clearly. I'll turn it over to Megan now, uh, who will call those who wish to testify.
Okay, we'll start with those who signed up in the room, uh, beginning with Ray Sample. And just a reminder, I'll call it on you one at a time. Please come up to the podium or unmute if you're on Zoom. Uh, begin your testimony by providing your full name and address. And then once you begin speaking, I'll start the timer that's displayed on the screen. So. And then make sure to hit the button, um, the little person button on your, there you go. So if it's red, you know that's on. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Uh, my name is Ray Sample. Uh, I work, I'm a real estate broker with Windermere in Centralia. I've been there seven years. Uh, prior to that, I taught at Lewis County Avenue School for sixteen years. Um, moved here twenty-three years ago when my daughter was three months old. Uh, we built our house, um, on five acres. At that point, it was a little larger than that. At that point, it was, it was pretty affordable, right, to, to build a house, um, to buy a house here in Lewis County. It's getting more expensive as, as the stats were, were stated. I don't think that's new to anybody. For those of us that already are established in a house, it's probably easier to, to state, you know, let's keep it rural and not make it easier for people to afford it. I'm in favor of this initiative. I guess it's not initiative, this, um, what do you call it? Proposal, because I think it makes it more approachable for more people. Probably in not necessarily even lower income, but, and, and that's, everybody already knows that. I can see too, that it benefits the most if you have four friends that would want to build a house or build on five acres. It could make it kind of more of a, a, an area of working together and affording it, making it more affordable. Could see it being really good for that. Uh, also for our kids that it's, it, it's difficult for them to maybe afford homes these days. I could see it being really good for, for a young family, build a fourplex and live in one of them and then rent out the other three. Uh, and then it could really help their, their financial tree, uh, long term. And so, and, and I, I think I, I would argue to say that it could still actually stay even more rural, because if you're going to spend a million dollars, which I think it could cost a million dollars to build a fourplex and to develop it. And then you have the value of each one. You could probably do it for a little bit less. But, um, you actually could have an integrity of, of, of a home that has less trash than if somebody's like super house poor and there, they put everything in there, they could barely afford it. And then they have all this, you know, extra, you know, trash round or whatever. I don't know if I'm explaining that or not, but, but, uh, anyway, I'm in favor of it and, uh, I, I'm, thank you for the invite and also, uh, thank you for your time considering it. And I'm sure that you'll make the right decision. Good luck on getting it approved.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the room who would like to provide testimony that has not signed up? Okay, we'll go ahead and move to Zoom. Um, if you are on Zoom, can you please use the raise your hand feature or send a message to me in the chat letting me know that you would like to provide testimony? You may also go ahead and just unmute if you need to. Okay, I'm seeing no one on Zoom that would like to provide testimony.
Okay, oral and written testimony is now closed. Thank you to everyone who provided testimony tonight. And, uh, also those that have provided testimony perhaps, uh, in writing. Now is the time for additional questions from the commissioners for staff based on testimony that we've heard. This is different than deliberations, which comes after a motion is made. Are there any questions from staff based on the testimony we received tonight? Okay, and don't see Corbin. Okay. All right. A reminder to the commissioners that a motion to recommend may be to recommend approval of the proposal as presented by the staff, recommend approval of the proposal with specific amendments or to recommend denial of the proposal. Once there is a motion and a second, we will have deliberations. Do I have a motion?
I will make that motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
No, you have to make a motion to approve, approve with, or to deny. So you need to make one of those recommendations. Sorry, in your motion.
Okay.
I anticipate us being split up here, so I don't see a, uh, a straight approval or denial going out. So, um, I don't know what you want me to make a motion to do in that case.
In order to.
Since I sort of already know.
To have a vote, someone has to make a motion either to recommend approval, recommend approval with amendments or recommend denial. Then you will have the opportunity to state, make your statements, what you think, how you feel about it, et cetera. Everybody gets to make a statement and then you'll vote. And so if the vote is to recommend denial, right, that vote may be a split vote, and that's fine. And then, right, so if it, if it fails, the motion fails, then we need a new motion after that to try and pass. Makes sense? So we have to start with a motion. You can make any of those three, and then we'll move.
What would be your choice of emotion in the matter?
Well, my decision's a little bit nuanced. So ultimately, I, I'm going to make a, a motion to deny. But there's a lot more to it than that, I would say, that I'd like to have on the record. So.
And there'll be time for that.
Yeah, so I don't want to do that now, but that's, I'll make that motion to get this ball rolling.
Okay, we have a motion to deny. Do we have a second?
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny the proposal. We can have discussion now, correct? Okay, so we will move to discussion, similar to deliberations, but not deliberations, right? Or is this?
It's the same thing. Discussion deliberation is the same thing. So this is when you can add your nuance, reminder, what you guys are saying now will be recorded in our notes and so forth, and I'll be using those for the transmittal letter.
Okay, I'd like to start with Corbin Foster, the commissioner online. Would you care to share your thoughts?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Corbin. I am willing to vote in favor of passing it as it is drafted by staff. I, I know from experience that no policy or proposal is perfect and will address 100% of any situations that could now or could in the future come up. I do think this proposal as drafted gives the county and the residents of the county more flexibility, more options, and a clearer framework for trying to solve these housing problems that the whole country is experiencing. So I am, I'm willing to vote accordingly, whether we have a motion to deny or a motion to approve on the table.
Okay, so you're, you're stating then that you do not support the motion and second to deny?
Correct. Or are we wanting a vote at this time along with statement or purely statement?
No, this is, this is a vote. Yeah, this is a vote on the motion to deny. Or, or to, yeah.
Sorry, point of, point of order. Sorry, just click point of order. This is discussion and deliberation, not vote. Megan will call the vote in a minute, so. But I think your clarification to Commissioner Foster's good. The motion is to deny, so if you wish it to be approved, then you would vote no on this motion when the vote comes. But this is the opportunity to state your rationale for how you're going to vote, make statements about it.
Okay, thank you. Hey, did you have anything else, Corbin?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go down the row then. I'll start with.
No, not at this time.
Okay, I can pronounce your first name. Yeah.
And what is your question?
We're discussing the motion, which is to deny. Okay, so did you have any comments that you would like to make in support of your position?
I made a couple of comments earlier, and to support that, I think we're very lax in data, numbers, actual construction numbers. You've eliminated the garages and the square footage that's inherent in that. And, you know, the overlapping of the well circles and the septic distances and the drainages. I just don't think this is sufficient to go to the state and withstand an appeal. I mean, this is basically a wish list without a whole bunch of facts in it. I just looked at a property, not even five acres, was $960,000. And if you build four lots, four houses on there, that's $270,000 times four. I mean, we're talking 2 million just for one five-acre piece that you're looking at, and who's going to buy that? Some, somebody living in their cars? I mean, I think this is just, it's just not very practical. So I would, I would like to see more information put forward before we, you know, go down that path.
Okay, thank you. Laurie?
Well, I kind of have the opposing view of that. I like the initiatives that you guys took to come up with something new. I am a little concerned about what I expect the challenges would be, but I'm sure you're well aware of that and prepared to meet those challenges. I, I would say, if I was making any motion, I would say I would like to have it just a little bit bigger, but you made, you stated a fairly good case of why you're not doing that. I'm a little bit concerned if I just built, if I just bought my five acres and I built my house, and then all of a sudden, my neighbor is building four houses right next to me. It seems like it could be a little bit of a surprise to me. And if there's no, you know, if you're not in a development or anything, there would be no covenant. So, you know, a person would maybe not expect this. Eventually, I suppose they would, but, you know, it could be a surprise to somebody when this, you know, starts being built next door to them. But on the other hand, I, I really see some advantages if you were willing to pay for it, because like you say, it's, it's not, each, each individual thing isn't going to be any cheaper. But I could see that if you had a farmhouse there and you wanted to build two, one for grandma and one for your kids, get them out of the RV, I think it's a great idea. The best way to make it cheaper, like I've said before, is go back to the state and say, cut this, all this stuff out that's coming down the pipe that makes the houses so expensive. And, but you've also said that you visualize that because our system is set up in a way that we can modify it as things come up, or we realize that maybe we've made an error, or we want to amend it somehow. I kind of feel comfortable that that could happen. So I, I feel that I am am for it.
Thank you, Laurie. Gretchen?
I will be voting no on the denial. I'm in favor of the RHA, and contrary to Jeff's opinion about the lack of data, I feel like it's been very thorough. And I don't know, I can't remember what, at what point you came into this conversation, but it's been going on for a very long time, and there's been a lot of work done on the, on the details, and they're certainly not going to be able to get away with anything more than a single-family home would be. If, if anything, they're more restricted than a single-family home would be, and to be right next door to four little 900-square-foot houses might be just as shocking as a 5,000-square-foot house right on your line, too. So I don't, I, I recognize that this isn't going to work out for a lot of people, but just the having the option to have it work out for a few that can get it together and figure it out, I think is worth it, because the housing crisis is real, and we are restricted in so many other ways because we're so rural. We can't have sewers in places that aren't incorporated, so we can't have multifamily housing downtown Packwood because we don't have wastewater treatment. If that's where you want, I mean, if that's where multifamily housing belongs, then we're not even allowed to do that. So this is a very creative way, I think, that these guys have come up with to create just a little bit more housing. And I hope that some people can figure it out and take advantage of it, but I know that it's not a, it's not a perfect, it's not gonna make a huge impact, but it is something, and I, I believe that it's worth it, and I applaud the effort.
Thank you, Gretchen.
Fred, could I follow up real quick with something what she said, Jason, excuse me? Two, I think, I, I could be willing to be corrected, but two of the largest expenses when you're building a house is the property and the road. And so, because you were able to talk to county and to let this be a driveway, which I would love to, as I've said before, let, let this happen in other circumstances, but because of that, I think it has potential, even though the septics are a problem and all of that, but it does have potential to allow somebody to be able to form a little group reasonably, because if grandma's already got the land, you know, she got it for 12 bucks. So, you know, I mean, it's gonna be, you know, a good deal. So.
Your attempt at humor was a whole lot better than mine. All right, Jason.
Okay, so, I actually don't dislike the RHA itself as presented necessarily. I, I really, if I could, I mean, I agree with most things that actually have been said up here about it. I, I don't have a problem with, we've come a long distance, and I, I like it so much more now than the first time we heard it. And I don't, I don't think it's a bad idea. The, the big challenge that I have with it, well, there's a couple. The big challenge that I have with it is that we're all saying that we don't want this to become a big urban sprawl thing, but eventually we'll all be gone. And, and one thing I know, especially, you know, I think about this a lot, the time that I lived in New York, is there's, when you start something, it tends to grow over time. And, and I just, more than anything, wanna, you know, we're just a recommending bodies. We're not deciding anything here. So I'm more would like to just add some nuances for the commissioners to throw about as they, you know, actually have to make the decision. But I have some concerns that once, you know, we open these things up, we always say we can take them back, but that's not usually how those things go. They just tend to get bigger and bigger and bigger over time, which maybe that's what they want, and that's fine. My, another, my biggest problem with it, or my biggest challenge with it, is that I anticipate potentially this could take a lot of time and energy and resources to fight this battle, and which I don't think that, from what I can tell as a county, we have a whole lot of extra. We already have our staff and, and the people involved in the county doing a ton. We've got so many fish to fry that I think, I mean, actually, to Gretchen's point, there's a lot of issues where we can concentrate development more effectively and more within the guidelines of what we'd all like to see, if maybe we're able to take those resources and focus them on that. So I have very much the same opinion, and I guess maybe just on a, on a different side of it, that, that I would hate to see us, you know, chase this dog down the road and not go anywhere when, when we could have devoted those resources, both monetarily and time and focus toward things that have a higher likelihood of not only happening, but having a larger impact. Which kind of brings me to the last thing that, that I would say in defense of, or in support of why I'm voting the way that I am, is that we've already got a an extra house ADU program. It's not very widely adopted as is. What did we have, like 16 last year? It's not a lot. And we're saying that this is going to be far less likely, in all reality, to produce even those kinds of results. I mean, I know we could do like 20 a year, but if we're only doing 16 ADUs that are far less expensive to develop than all, all of what we're talking about, my, my concern is to devote all these, all these resources that we have and attention to a thing that to give people more of something they already don't really want to do. It's not that I hate the idea, but I just don't see it being the right time to do it, and maybe the right, or the most wise place to put our, our resources. So if that all makes sense, you know, I, I actually, like I said, I don't hate the idea. I think some people might be able to find a way to make it work. But I don't think it's going to make a very big impact. We already have levers to pull in the county. Everybody can do an ADU today, which would open it up, and they're already not doing it. We just did a campground thing that's got known loopholes in it to allow for people to be able to live more easily and a lot less, it would cost a lot less to do that than, than building any of these. So we did just do something that was pretty easy, that was, that had, I think, will end up having a far greater impact. So I think there's ideas like that out there. And I personally just would like to see more of our, of the, the brain power and the, and the energy and the focus being devoted to those things that will actually make a larger impact. I just don't, I just don't think this dog's gonna hunt at the end of the day. And so I just don't think it's a wise use of resources. That's, that's my rationale for, for the no on it.
Turned it off. Sorry. Just spent on the whole time and I turned it off. I appreciate, especially that last comment, Jason. I am a proponent of the concept, the RHA, and primarily for the reason that we have two very capable lawyers sitting here telling us that they can defend this. And the exhaustive work that we've done over the last year has just been super detailed. I've spent hours reading everything that you have sent to us. I've done some of my own poking around on the web, and of course, we know how factual everything is on the web. But I've, I've learned a lot even outside, you know, this chamber, and I've talked to people in Olympia recently in a trip that I made up there, and other citizens in the community, and I have not heard a single person chime against it. There are people of means who have the ability to build these smaller units on properties if, you know, if, if, if this is opened up to them to do. Perhaps maybe why a lot of people aren't building an ADU on their properties now, because maybe there's a lot of people that couldn't afford it because of the price of lumber, construction and whatnot. I myself have an old house on my property that I would like to turn into an ADU, but my wife and I are not rich, you know, so we're gonna have to do this little, you know, at a time as, as we go. And, you know, I'm able to do that by myself. So, you know, in, in taking, you know, maybe a slightly different context, where we have a huge, undoubtedly a huge need for more housing in Lewis County, I say the more types of solutions that we can offer, the better. You know, yes, we have the ADUs. We have, you know, the ability to develop this and that, and now there's RHA, which is unique in the state, that will actually set us, you know, on a, on a chart to actually make a major difference in our whole state. But just speaking of Lewis County, the more options that we have, in my opinion, the better. And we have really gone out of our way to ensure rural character, to follow the mandates of the GMA, and the fact that we have a proposal, it may not be perfect for some, but what is? What is perfect? You know, and we, as Mindy has so eloquently said, we can make course changes as we go. We find a problem that we didn't anticipate, we fix it, you know, and we keep this train going, because the longer we sit on it, the housing problem is gonna get worse, and people are gonna be complaining more about homelessness, and we can't afford to live here. You know, and we have businesses and industry coming into this area that, you know, we need housing for. So, you know, it has been a monumental task that you have all done to get us to this point, and for me, it's a darn good product, you know. Yeah, it may not be perfect, but like I said, we can, we can fix it as we go. You know, the plane is almost completely built. So, you know, if we have to do some interior work while we're flying, okay, we'll do it. And so, you know, I would support the, the project with that understanding that if there are any problems, if we are to be a part of any future solutions to that problem that we, you know, are brought into it as soon as possible, so that we can make our recommendations and work with you to, you know, to make it happen. But, again, that's, that's where I stand. So I'm gonna go ahead and go one more round the room here and see if there's anybody else. So I'm going to go ahead and go one more round the room here and see if there's anybody else, but I tried to wait till the last for mine.
Could I read Commissioner Russell's statement?
Yes, I was wondering if that, if this was the best time to do that.
Unless if you want to go another round, I, I mean, okay. So Commissioner Russell provided a statement that I'd like to read into the record because he's unable to be here. He cannot vote by proxy, can't vote, but he did want to provide his statements. So I'll read it. "I will be unable to attend the February 27th public meeting to discuss RHA, but I wanted to have the statement below entered into the record. I oppose the adoption of the RHA initiative and associated changes to the county code for the following reasons. One, unintended consequences. This concept has not been implemented anywhere else, so there is no method to determine what the unintended consequences are and the effect they may have on communities. Increasing land use intensity and RDD lots scattered throughout Lewis County will have consequences. Two, safety. Allowing four units on an RDD site with one simple driveway for one could cause significant issues for emergency responders as well as traffic onto, sorry, traffic into and out of narrow driveway on a high-speed access road. Lewis County has been dealing with similar situations caused by simple segregations for decades. Three, critical areas. Many RDD 5, 10, and 20 lots contain critical areas. Many landowners disturb critical areas due to lack of knowledge. Increasing the number of people and cars by four times on property that contains critical areas increases the potential damage to those critical areas." Five, housing cost. This initiative with its minimal impact will not reduce the cost of housing in Lewis County. And six, rural character. In my opinion, the RHA does not meet the definition nor will protect the rural character of Lewis County. This commissioner asked staff for additional or specific guardrails in this initiative, such as concentrating them on RDD properties around Lammards or communities like Packwood. The staff feels that this type of concentration does not maintain rural character. This is a critical distinction, I believe, as I believe placing RHA pods throughout Lewis County does not maintain rural character. Therefore, I propose implementation of the RHA initiative."
Okay, thank you. Okay, around the room again, I'll start with Jason this time. Anything else you'd like to share?
I'll just say one thing that even though we think that we can defend it and we have a good argument, that does not also follow that we think, or, or that it's winnable. Not by any fault of anybody here, but you know, sometimes you, you know, good arguments and, and cases that, that should go well, don't. So just want to make that distinction. I'm not, I don't, I don't know what the odds are, but I just want to make sure that, that that's brought up because that, that is my main issue. I, I don't want to get, my concern is that we get distracted on something that's going to have almost no impact to, to people and it could be a really long time from now that, that this gets implemented, if it does at all. And we could be working on other things that I think could have a, a larger impact. So I, I just wanted to make that distinction and on the record there that those could be two different things.
Thank you, Jason. Gretchen, do you have anything else? Lori, Jeff? Okay, thank you. Corbin? Mr. Foster?
Nothing else to add, Corbin.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second to recommend denial of the RHA as it stands or as it's presented. I'm ready to call for a vote, okay?
Okay, I'm going to call on each commissioner and go ahead and give me your response, whether you vote yes or no to recommend denial. Commissioner spoken?
No.
Commissioner Alves?
Think that's a yes, right? Yes to deny.
Commissioner Corbin?
No.
Commissioner Fritsch?
No.
Commissioner Foster?
No.
And Commissioner Scootley?
Yes to deny.
The motion fails with two yes votes and four no votes.
Okay, we start over, okay? The, the floor is open for a commissioner to make a motion and we will need a second.
Make a motion to pass the RHA as presented.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Lori seconds. Okay, now we can go back to discussion, all right? So this time I'm going to, I'm trying to mix it up so everybody gets a chance to start and everybody gets a chance to end. So do you mind if I start with Gretchen? Jason, is that okay?
I don't have, I don't have much more to say.
Okay, Lori?
I guess the only thing that I thought of when everybody was talking is, I don't really know if it's, well, it's all of our problems if the county is spending a bunch of money unwisely, but I'm, I'm really not feeling that I need to worry about that because I figure you guys need to be worrying about that. And if you were afraid of it, then you shouldn't have brought it to us in the first place. So basically, I'm just thinking, what's, even if nobody uses it, what's the worst that could happen if we don't spend a bucket load defending it? I think it's kind of, you never know what people are going to do with it. It's going to be something that you're really not thinking maybe. And people are pretty inventive on coming up with their own line of BS. So I, I, I think it's, I, I'm going to give it a go.
Okay, Jeff?
Just this last year, there was a fourplex, several fourplexes built outside of Winlock in exactly this sort of situation. Please drive by and look at that mess before you vote to pass this.
Gretchen, did you have something else? Okay, one more time, Commissioner Foster.
Nothing near to add, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, and I have nothing to add. All right, then we will, we have a motion on the floor then to approve the RHA as presented. We're ready for the vote.
Okay, Commissioner spoken?
Aye.
Commissioner Alves?
Nope.
Commissioner Corbin?
Aye, yes.
Commissioner Fritsch?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Aye, yes.
And Commissioner Scootley?
Nope.
Motion passes with four yes votes and two no votes.
That concludes the hearing for the Rural Housing Alternative. Thank you, everybody. I love the discussion. All right. It is time for Good of the Order. Mindy?
Yeah, I have two things. I, I would just really quickly like to echo, thank you. I think commissions oftentimes feel like they need to put forward unanimous votes and this is too new for everybody to just not nuance it and talk about it. And I think everything that all of you have said is valid and important. So my first item is letter of transmittal. I will get you guys a draft letter of transmittal and we will have an opportunity to, to have a conversation about that on March 12th before I submit it. So if I don't do an adequate job of summarizing the points that have been brought up here, you can let me know that and we'll get it. If anybody wants to just submit what you'd like said in the letter of transmittal, just email it to me and I can include it then and we can, we can look at it together. The other item is we will be appointing a new commissioner next week on March 5th. The, the application period is still open through the 29th through tomorrow, so 3:00 PM. So if anybody wants to apply to be on this planning commission, as you see, you guys do really good work and really important work. So I'm hoping, we've got a few good candidates, but hopefully we'll get some more. And then hopefully we can have that person join us then, starting on March 12th. And that is it for me for Good of the Order.
Okay, thank you, Mindy. All right, any other items perhaps from the planning commissioners? Anything for Good of the Order? Mr. Scootley?
You, you just keep practicing. Go get it.
We'll practice after the meetings.
Over beer. Okay, so as some of you may or may not know, I've, I'm a retired architect and have built my own and developed my own properties and buildings and run an architectural practice for over 50 years. So none of this is new to me. The thing that's most important, in, in my opinion, is the process that we've just gone through. Because the people must be included or they, they simply feel left out and then nothing can work. So I, I'm very, I'm very glad of, for what you folks have done and what we've done. I may disagree, but that's fine.
Chair, I'm sorry, I had one other thing in the end. I am remiss and this is Commissioner Foster's last. Oh, good, okay. I, I should, no, I wanted to acknowledge that this is Commissioner Foster's last meeting with us and we've really appreciated all the time and effort you've put forward. We're going to miss you.
Very appropriate that you did that. I would just like to echo that and I'm sure I speak for all of us that we appreciate everyone's investment of time, but especially Corbin's. You've been a stellar part of the team and we appreciate it. And it's been an honor to serve with you and we wish you fair winds and following seas in your next journeys in, in life. Okay, calendars, anything other than the next meeting, which will be March 12th, which will be discussing the comprehensive plan periodic update? And since there's nothing else from the staff, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. We are adjourned. We've been asked to please clear the building so that